I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please bow your heads and would you join me for the Lord's prayer? Stay standing. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Hey, good morning. Our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, January ninth at ten thirty in this room. Note the new time. It'll be at ten thirty instead of ten from now on. And the next regular meeting will be Wednesday, January tenth at ten thirty also. So we'll be back to Wednesday after the holiday weekend that we had this week. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco? Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioner's regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
The video recording doesn't comply with the revised code as it said. It dictates how minutes should be taken.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to acknowledge the retirement of Mrs. Debbie Santangelo from her position of Chief Accountant with the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. Mrs. Santangelo retired effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, with over seventeen years of service to Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners joins the Trumbull County Auditor and her staff in paying a fond farewell to Debbie and wish her many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which she is most deserving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes, and before before we move on, bears recognizing Debbie. When I first started, Debbie was always a mentor to me, especially in budgeting and financing and just in her county workings. She is, it's bittersweet because we're gaining a lot of new employees and a lot of good talent and everything, but we're losing people like Debbie, and she's invaluable. So from the time I first started to the time as of last week, she's been helping me. So Debbie, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. I know on behalf of the Auditor's Office and on behalf of myself especially. So now you can travel, and God knows you've been everywhere. I'm jealous, and you can continue to do that. But Debbie, you've been invaluable, and you will surely be missed. Thank you so much.
Hey, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mar, when do you want to read the resolution?
Sure, I'd love to. I didn't know we were reading.
Well, we can though. For her, then we'll present it to her.
Come here, but you might want to keep your distance. And then you're going on a big trip. So this is a resolution honoring Debbie Santangelo, Chief Accountant, upon her retirement from the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. And whereas it is with great pleasure that the Board of County Commissioners joins others in honoring Debbie Santangelo upon her retirement from the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. Whereas Debbie retired effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, with over seventeen years of dedicated public service to the residents of Trumbull County, in addition to her six years of public service with the State Auditor's Office. Whereas Debbie always strived for success, which is the very reason she has been promoted numerous times. She provided expert skill and guidance to the current and former auditor, leading the county successfully for many years through some challenging financial times. Debbie was the Deputy Auditor for former auditor Adrian Bibianno, and served as the Chief Accountant with Auditor Martha Yoder, assisting with a seamless transition this past year since Audrey Yoder took office in March of two thousand and twenty-three. That can't be hoped. And whereas Debbie's experience, dedication, and devotion have proven invaluable during her years of service, is willingly shared her knowledge, experience, and expertise in the operation of the Auditor's Office. The excellent relationship she maintained with everyone deserves her the respect she so well deserves. Funded upon for guidance, leadership, friendship, and knowledge. Her the residents of Trumbull County in a caring, professional manner. Therefore, be it resolved, Debbie will now have time to travel many times and spend time with her husband, family, and friends. She is a world traveler and enjoys visiting locations across the globe. What's next, Debbie?
With days and...
I was going with you. Therefore, be it for the result that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners provides the staff at the Auditor's Office and congratulating Debbie Santangelo on her retirement and sincerely wishes her many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which she is. Debbie, thank you so much.
I don't want to have to talk to everybody, but I do appreciate working with you and Danny and also helping keep transition with... Working with... I really enjoyed it. I'm going to miss everybody, but I want to be more proud of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you so much. Yeah, okay. But that's Jeremy, I guess.
Oh, that's it.
I'll go this way.
Okay, item number four is to acknowledge the retirement of Ms. Deborah Gania from her position as Utility Account Clerk III with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Debbie will be retiring with more than thirty-three years of dedicated service to the citizens of Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners joins Gary Newbrow, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer, Scott Werner, Assistant Sanitary Engineer, Bob Morano, Controller, and Bill Durst, Waste Water Superintendent, and staff in thanking Debbie for her years of hard work and dedication to the Sanitary Engineers Department. And congratulations to Debbie on her retirement.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Folks, I don't think it should be understated either. Debbie Gania had thirty-three years of service in the Sanitary Engineers Department. And Scott, did you want to say anything about Debbie as well? Thirty-three years is a long time. She's not here today, but...
Thank you, Scott Werner, Assistant Sanitary Engineer. As I said yesterday, Debbie was an invaluable... Seems to be the key word this morning, but she really was a key invaluable part of our department. She was very dedicated, as it states here on the resolution. She was very well-liked, so she will be missed. I will tell you that up till the very minute she left, she was worried about trying to make sure she had everything in place so she could create a seamless transition for whomever took her position. So can't say enough good about her, but she will be missed. She had been there a long time. And as I said yesterday, it was one of the employees where I could hand something off, and I'd walk away, and I wouldn't look back because I knew it was well taken care of, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Very good.
Thank you, Debbie.
Item number five is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. And those companies are Dominion East Ohio with two permits and Village Energy Cooperative Association.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco? Item number six is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the quarterly operator fleet permit requested by the company listed, and that's J. and M. Lumber.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seven is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, and that's for J. Row Transportation Services, Inc.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, and that company is O.K. Brugman, LLC.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco? Item number nine is to acknowledge the proposal for aggregate materials for the year two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five and to authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for sealed bids for the purchase of aggregate materials for use by the Trumbull County Engineer for the contract period of February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four through February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
One number nine. Aggregate materials for the engineer.
Go, okay, more slowly because I'm still looking at my agenda because that's where I have my notes from yesterday. So, yeah.
Yes on number nine?
Yes.
Item number ten is to approve the time and place of the two thousand and twenty-four Trumbull County Engineers Annual Dinner Meeting of all the township and county authorities having directly to do with the construction and repair of roads and bridges within the county. At such meeting which shall be open to the general public, the engineer or his designees shall instruct proper authorities as to the best and most economical methods for repairing and maintaining the roads and bridges of the county, so as to provide a uniformed system of highway work for such county. And that annual meeting down in the note is being held at De La Chia's banquet and catering facility on Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P. M.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to pay NeoRide in Ohio Council of Government membership dues in the amount of one thousand dollars for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four, and Mike Salamone, Transit Administrator, will serve as the representative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco? Item number twelve is to authorize the transfer of Mr. Michael Dalbono, Deputy Dog Warden at the Dog Kennel, to the position of groundskeeper at the Building Maintenance Department, Pay Range Four at eighteen forty-two per hour.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to accept the resignation of Tanner Palm, probationary telecommunicator in the Trumbull County nine-one-one Department, effective December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to accept the termination of Alexandra Bysel, probationary telecommunicator in the Trumbull County nine-one-one Department, effective December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
I would like it when these come over. It would be a source. Because person to one twenty-four, only the appointing authority permitted to terminate. We ran a problem last year with Middleton, which we were fighting for and ended up and with a problem that we had to resolve with mediation. The only individuals who are permitted to term are the board, the appointing authority, which is a board of commissioners. All I see is that a letter came to us that shows that the Assistant Director terminated someone back in December, and I just want to make sure, like if there's some other type of part of the revised code that says this is okay that I'm not aware of, I want to know because my understanding of the code, us being the appointing authority, we're the only ones who are allowed to do that, and it shouldn't take place until after it's come to the Board of Commissioners. So is there anything?
Morning, Commissioners. Obviously, I got it after the fact too. I'm not going to sit here and lie. I would not do that. I'm being transparent. It was given to me a week after the employee had already been terminated. However, per the contract, so, and I will be honest with you, this happens at every department within Trumbull County. And I mean, it's been approved thus far. I'm not saying that that makes a difference, but J.F.S., C.S.E.A., nine-one-one, multiple other departments. If the person is on probation, per the CBA, Article Seven, newly hired employees shall be on probation for the first one hundred and eighty days for their work, for their employment, during which they, during which time they may be terminated at will by the employer without redress to applications of the grievance arbitration provisions of this agreement. So this is a probationary employee who was within one hundred and eighty days. If something egregious happens, if she, he, or she, whoever the employee may be, calls off, does something nefarious, does something malicious with intent, I don't think that it's in the best interest to wait weeks to terminate that person.
Last year.
But she was a full-time, regular employee. There's a difference.
So I'm going to need to make sure. I think that it would be beneficial to have an opinion because just because J.F.S. and C.S.E.A. does their own hiring and firing, and they do things, in my opinion, contrarres the way it should be done because we're still the appointing authority, and everything has to come through us. See, when C.S.E.A. and J.F.S. hire, they bring it to our agenda. We have to make sure it's...
Correct, and they also do that when anybody's...
They will, they actually journalize them, just like we do when they come in and they're hired from nine-one-one. We journalize them.
Correct.
So whenever they get terminated, those needs to, those needs to come to us as well, and my opinion is a...
Sure, and they do. This is coming to you. I mean, I guess...
There is nothing, there is nothing formally done until we vote on it.
Correct.
So that's what we're doing today.
This is a letter that was already written that says that they...
It doesn't matter until the board takes action.
It says that they've been terminated from full-time and employment effective December fourteenth, so that already...
I can say whatever it wants until the board acts on it.
Is she still on payroll? That's what I'm saying. She's already been terminated, and the only appointing...
She's not working.
The only appointing authority that can do that is the Board of Commissioners pursuant to O.R.C. one-twenty-four. I just strongly suggest that our county department has, I'm not, I'm just telling you. I understand. I do understand what you're saying. Coming in if they're, if they have to go on the journal to be hired, they have to go on the journal. We just need to make sure that we're doing things the right way because what happened last year is we ended up spending money to fix a problem that was a mistake.
That's not the same.
It was a different scenario. I have to state that for the record, but I would like to clarify since we're talking about this. So a prime example would be if something, like I said, nefarious happens when somebody's on probation, and I'm talking, things happen every day. And I don't mean to say this, but what if somebody committed sexual harassment? What if somebody? Then you put them on unpaid, you put them on leave. It cannot be unpaid. It has to come to the Board of Commissioners. We have to make sure that we're following rules. We got in trouble with that with the park situation, with the Middleton situation. We just need to do things the right way. You don't just say, okay, you're gonna, you're terminated, you're fired. We have to follow proper laws relative to disciplinary action, suspensions, paid leave, unpaid leave, and terminations. And again, this agenda item right here is the Board of Commissioners voting on something effective December fourteenth. We should not be doing that, so that's all I have, and I don't... I'm not asking you to come up here and defend what happened. I'm asking that you just correct it moving forward. That's all. Thank you.
And the issue is, if it is, if we don't terminate her today, that's up to the board. It's still a board decision. You're saying, you're acting like it's not a board decision. It's still a board decision. She can say she's terminated, but if the board votes for it, she's not terminated.
Then she has to come back. That's very, I mean, it's quite... Not been working, so she's already been...
But if the board deems that she can still work, then it doesn't matter, and that's what we do at these meetings.
Came out in our audit. I mean, if I put it in again, it'll come out again. We need to make sure we're following it. Yeah, this has not come out, this has not come up in the audit. This has not.
It's not even the same thing.
Of a probationary employee being let go.
It's not the same thing.
It's not the exact same. Well, then it's not.
Well, then it's not the same scenario.
You're not here to argue. Please take your seat. This is enough. I mean, you came up here, you admitted that...
I have enough. Robert's order, volume twelve, that you said, once you start doing personal attacks, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, or we can close the meeting. Those, that's Robert's rule of order if you want to do that, and it would be your fault, Commissioner.
Hey, I'm taking the vote again.
Do things the right way.
I'm taking the vote for item number fourteen, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because this wasn't done properly, and it's a retro act of termination for someone that has already been told that they were terminated, and it's not compliant with the revised code, no.
Item number fifteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute any and all required documents related to the grant application process, receipt and return of related documents, execution of grant documents, implementation of activities and expenditures of funds related to the administration of all ongoing or open grant programs carried over from previous years.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the President, Danny Malloy, of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to review, approve, and sign the Ohio Department of Development Security Role Assignment Forms and Authorized Signature Card for various grant programs administered through the Office of Community Development.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to approve the modification of the authorized signature cards for request for payment and status of funds report, and authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the attached authorized signature card for Trumbull County, Ohio, and the attached signature certificate, which must be notarized, certifying the signature of the President of the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and twenty-four, and authorizing the following persons to sign the attached authorized signature card for Trumbull County, Ohio, in order to sign drawdowns and status reports for CDBG funds for the county.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to approve a no-cost time extension for the contract with Boak and Sons, Inc. for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Building Roof Replacement Project awarded on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The original completion date of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four is being extended through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the work will resume when weather permits.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to approve an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Community Legal Aid Services, Inc. for professional services required to implement a community development block grant Fair Housing Service Program for Trumbull County for the term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And down in the note, the agreement term is for a two-year period rather than a one-year period as the State of Ohio Department of Development has changed their funding cycle length starting in project year two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and seventeen, excuse me.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize the donation of furniture from the offices of Trumbull County Planning Commission as submitted to Warren Township, Ohio. The furniture is being donated to the Warren Township trustees, and it is not needed for public use by the planning commission. And Warren Township is in need of furniture, and will pick up the furniture and deliver it to their public offices. Per the prosecutor's office, R.C. three oh seven twelve D authorizes the donation of county-owned personal property to an Ohio township.
Make a motion to accept.
Now, second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I think it should be a motion to approve. And if it's a motion to approve, yes.
Please move on.
Okay, item twenty-one is to approve the proposed lease between the Trumbull County Commissioners and Belmont Pines Hospital for a six-bed psychiatric residential treatment facility for children ages six to twelve years of age, located on the campus of Trumbull County Children's Services in the structure known as the Secure Care Building for Belmont Pines Hospital to perform PRTF services in accordance with State of Ohio regulatory requirements, PRTF licensing requirements, and contractual requirements of Aetna Better Health and Ohio Rise for monthly consideration of four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for a total of fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars per year through the duration of the contract period commencing January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four through January fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to approve the detailed drawings for the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project Number five dash S dash sixteen in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for statement of qualifications for all projects involving water and sanitary sewer construction and/or treatment for program year two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is to concur with the Trumbull County nine-one-one Director and the nine-one-one Assistant Director and select Philip Secanic Architects in consultation with Strolla Architects and Federal Engineering as the most qualified firm to provide professional services for the purposes of conducting feasibility studies for up to three properties to determine which property would be most suitable for a new nine-one-one dispatch center and to authorize the commencement of finalizing the project scope and price proposal negotiation process with representatives from the Trumbull County nine-one-one Dispatch Center and Philip Secanic Architects in consultation with Strolla Architects and Federal Engineering.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I tried to call and haven't been able to reach you. I've been playing... I didn't leave a message, but I called a couple of times. Who ranked these? Who graded them? I have the paperwork in front of me, but I don't know. It doesn't have any names.
P C Bond, nine-one-one Director. So Patty and I reviewed the proposals and looked for the... architects and consultants that would be the best for the job. Um, we only had three submissions that made it in time. One of them, uh, we had a fourth one that did not make the time cutoff. Of the three, Phillips Mechanics had the most innate knowledge, uh, that I think would be helpful for us, also saving us time and money. Uh, they already had previous, uh, studies on two of the buildings that we're looking at, um, which I'm hopeful will save us time and money and make that process a lot shorter since we are trying to get this ball rolling a lot faster and, and get us out of the building that we're currently in. Um, they also have the staff on hand. Additionally, um, two of their consultants, uh, one of them is Rob Jackson, who was the State Director of nine-one-one for Ohio. So having that, um, you know, local knowledge of Ohio's rules, I think would only benefit us and make the process a lot better. So that's why they ranked first. Uh, but it was Patty and I that went through those and then I sent everything up to Bill Danzo to make sure he was okay with the process. And now we can go forward and sit and meet with them and talk about scope of work and price point and all those things before we present it to you guys for approval.
That is very important to make sure that you send it to, um, for approval because we've had in the very recent history, problems or bidders or they get. I really appreciate that you went.
Last thing we want to do is slow down the process. So.
So it's, it's done quickly. Um, how did you obtain the information from their requests for qualifications packages to know what their workloads and such were?
Um, they had included that in the proposals. Um, one of the agencies didn't include, uh, include anything, didn't say what their current projects were, so they were ranked. That's why they got a zero.
That's why I was looking at this. I was trying to figure out who wrote them. I think it'd be a good idea to put your names on there, you know? But thank you very much. I appreciate your hard work.
Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-five is to authorize the attendance of Mike Salamone, Trumbull County Transit Administrator, to attend meetings, training, and events sponsored by or relative to the Federal Transit Administration, Ohio Department of Transportation, East Gate Regional Council of Government, NEORIDE, and other transit-related matters during the year two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I've not received anything about this. It just got added this morning now.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'd like to table number twenty-six. Number twenty-six is the road vacation for William A. Maitland Petroleum, A Plan of Lots in Hubbard Township. Uh, we asked yesterday at our, at our workshop uh, for the, the attorney, um, for the petitioner, uh, came in and wanted to know what we're doing with this. This has been.
I'll second the motion.
I'm, I'm explaining.
Make your motion. I'll second it and we can go into discussion.
Motion to table number twenty-six, as I was reading. If you vote on the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
What's up?
Um, I'd like to do discussion.
Yeah, and that's, that's one in the process of doing. Hold on, hold on. I'm, I'm in the middle of this. I'm the chair. I'll call on you when you ask to be recognized. Okay, so, okay, that's right.
I called for discussion. So this is something that was brought to the Commissioner.
This is something Commissioner Frenchco, you, when, do you not answer until you call and you're called on by the chair? You're the one that's stressed. You want Robert's Rules of Orders. We're going to follow it. We're going to follow it. Yes, we are.
Called for discussion.
Yes, we are. You call for discussion and, and I am, I am going to start off with the discussion with this. We're going to table this. This started in two thousand twenty-one. We got an opinion from the prosecutor that a Board of County Commissioners shall not adopt the resolution to vacate public road that is in Township Road unless the Board of Township Trustees has adopted a resolution approving a vacation. They have not as of yet. I talked to Trustee Hernandez. He's going to put on the agenda for their, their, um, January twelfth meeting, and hopefully they will adopt the resolution one way or another. If they do, then we will revise this thing. We'll bring it back up after they adopt it or deny the resolution supporting this. I was not here during this time, so I'd have to abstain today, uh, if, if it were to come before a vote today. But I, this will give me time to read the public hearing notes that they had back in two thousand twenty-one and abide by the Ohio Revised Code, uh, per our Prosecutor's Section fifty-five fifty-three oh four. So the dead issue.
So this was on our agenda yesterday and I contacted the prosecutor's office because we have, we have a problem with how our agendas are created.
We, we.
Okay, I'm talking now. So we have a problem with how our agenda is created. Any, anyone in the community from anywhere can send our clerk something and she will put it on the agenda. It doesn't matter if it's, it shouldn't be coming through, uh, the, the, I'm waiting for that print to happen where something really bad occurs, you know?
No, we had a meeting yesterday. Commissioner Cannon, myself allowed it to be on the agenda.
It was already on the agenda yesterday.
It was on the, no, it was, it was on the meeting notes yesterday for the public hearing.
We had a public hearing on.
You were not at.
Okay.
Number one for the year, forty-four last year, number one this year. She's missed already and counting.
Okay.
Go ahead. Continue.
We're always having to rehash everything that we do at the public meetings because she comes here unprepared, Commissioner.
You stop interrupting me and being bullies.
I wasn't interrupting you. You weren't speaking.
Up when I'm talking and the President.
We're not going to talk like that.
Okay, let's move on.
No. So this was something that came to us in two thousand twenty-one and the attorney decided to send an email to the clerk and add it to the agenda. It was on the agenda that she emailed late two, two, two afternoons ago and it was on our draft agenda.
For the public workshop to discuss.
Yes, it was. So what I'm saying is a person from, an attorney from the public who represents a private citizen contacted our clerk and added something to the agenda.
Not true.
That, and that's why it was there. It, so it was taken off, but last night I actually e- emailed Prosecutor Danzo's office and said, this came to be put on our agenda and we don't have.
It's already done yesterday afternoon. We already went straight to the office yesterday and talked to him yesterday afternoon.
Interrupting.
Okay, you just want to get airtime. You want airtime. You want to talk like you're in control. It's a dead issue. It's table. We voted on tabling the issue. We don't need to have any more discussion.
He's the Chair, Commissioner.
Stop. It doesn't matter. The chair doesn't get to interrupt and be a big bully. This is.
We voted on this thing. We moved on from it.
As I was saying, this morning, finally, Bill Danzo sent and per my request, all of the information related to past opinions because nothing should come on our agenda without a refresher as to what the matter is. We had a public hearing about it in two thousand twenty-one and this morning, just this morning, should receive all the backup information. So I was going to make a motion to table. I'm, I'm glad that it was prompted by the email that came in from Bill Danzo this morning and I'm glad.
From the conversation with Bill Danzo yesterday, and he didn't get it to us till this morning.
No, he responded to my email directly.
On last night he did?
No, this morning.
Right. When he responded, that responded to all of us.
Right, that's what he did.
If you want the credit for talking to Danzo, we'll give it to you, even though you weren't here and everybody was here to listen yesterday and they know.
Just listen to the meeting. Discuss it all at length.
Why we need a better process because no one in the community should be able to email our clerk and put something on.
We work for the community. We work for the taxpayers. They have a say in their government.
That, so those.
You're not a dictator.
Those requests should come to the Board of Commissioners in order for us to decide if we want them on. There is the, the clerk, it is not her role to put on everything that she gets emailed to.
I don't put on everything that I get emailed.
Okay. Well, this was there. You can take the, call the question.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Just to be clear, this is the table.
This is the table.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that concludes the regular agenda items. Uh, for this week, a couple of things that I had to start out with. There is a coalition, uh, Colberg Lake is in Hubbard Township. There's a coalition that's trying to save the lake, save the dam. We had the scenario similar to Gerard Lake years ago where the state says the dam is failing. They're ordering that the dam either be fixed or replaced. Um, there's a concerned group of citizens in Hubbard Township. They're getting together to work to see if there are federal funds out there or state funds or private funds to help save the lake rather than having the, the landowner there tear the dam down. Then we have another Gerard hole. Um, that'll be an, an open meeting at the, uh, Hubbard Municipal Building this Saturday, eleven-thirty AM. So any concerned citizen, maybe even some people from Gerard that went through this or Liberty Township could, uh, assist in this thing or anyone has information or knowledge. Um, they're open for feedback there and, and it is, uh, it is a good thing. There's people that grew up for year and, and enjoyed recreating on that lake for years and years and fished and, and for them to, um, lose a lake like that, you know, they're losing a recreational opportunity. So anyone concerned, feel free to attend that meeting this Saturday. Also, Trumbull Community Action. What's up?
I'd like to respond to that. Okay, so, uh, additionally, um, just from a compliance background, um, and I know this happens all, all the time because, uh, not everyone understands the nuances of the Ohio Open Meetings law. But if there are, if there are the majority of the trustees or the majority of the board there, we should, cannot be discussing anything that would lead toward making a decision. And so since I know that they're looking at us for funds, possibly letters of support, we can go and obtain information. The trustees can go and obtain information, but the Board of Commissioners cannot say anything there. Uh, but I, I want to make it clear and this is something that's been mis- miscommunicated to the media that, that there was no funds available. There were funds available. There were funds available even through House Bill thirty-three. No one applied for. The deadlines for some of these funds have already passed as recently as the middle of December. Uh, and the trust, well, the one trustee was on the news saying there's nothing we can do. There.
You're using this to bash your opponent. That's, that's, that's false. That's absolutely false. You're not going to grandstand through this. Stick to the topic at hand. No personal attacks.
There was funding available and a lot of.
You don't know there's funding available. There's many, many people that looked in, including a state representative and could not obtain funding. There were people from the Congressman's office.
The deadline was, I believe, December eighteenth or December thirteenth for, uh, I think it was seven hundred million dollars in funds that could have been available, but nobody.
In your opinion, that's, that's you talking and that's, there's no fact to that. We all know that. So.
Not supposed to be disparaging, but you are sitting up here saying these things without any.
Okay, well, you're saying there's funding available. Go get a look. See you do it. And when you fail or, or you succeed, that would be great. We'd love for you to succeed.
No one has, and, and also for the record, no one from the township, not any of the trustees, has come to the Commissioners. They sat in this meeting, been here for photo ops, but they have never come and spoke on this and asked, and, and come up and asked us if, for any type of assistance relative to being able to ascertain or obtain funding. They sat next to Mr. Savette and people from planning and people from the parks and never stood up and said anything to the Board of Commissioners. And this is what the problem is largely, I believe, in Trumbull County, is, um, acting in, from a position of crisis because there was not proper planning. And this is what needs to change. And it's a, it's a mentality where you have forethought and you're, and you're working towards improving things rather than putting out fires. And that's what we have now on that situation.
Well, I'll attend the meeting. I encourage everybody to attend the meeting and hopefully a resolution or something can be done in regards to this. Okay, also, we have, for those in need for assistance with, uh, winter crisis, um, propane, fuel oil, wood, coal, wood pellets, if they're having heating issues this year. It hasn't been that cold, but we're getting in the, in the season now that anyone that, uh, requires assistance, they have through TCAP, a Winter Crisis Assistance Program. Uh, Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, they have interviews with people at their office on Palmyra Road in Warren. For those that would like to see assistance and I'd ask that we put this, uh, potentially on our website, um, on a deodorant if we could, um, the information for somebody where they can call, um, to schedule an appointment to go in to try to get some low-income assistance with their heating bills or heating supplies. They also have a household water assistance program that's available until March thirty-first. So for those of out there that are having trouble paying the bills, um, there is some form of help out there through TCAP. Um, you can call the number to see if you apply and that'll be on our County Commissioner's website. Um, or they can call the Commissioner's office and we'll give you the phone numbers. Okay, anybody have anything else for the good of Trumbull County? Recorder Latell.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to remind, uh, everybody here and everybody listening that our next Good Deeds Program, uh, that we are having is going to be this coming Wednesday, January tenth, at the Scope Center in Niles. Uh, that's at fourteen East State Street, uh, in Niles. Again, uh, it has, the, the ones that we have done so far have been very well attended. Uh, it's some great information to learn about the probate process and how we are helping county residents protect their most valuable assets when they pass away. So I encourage everybody to come out. If you can't make it, uh, this coming Wednesday, the tenth, our next one after that will be February twenty-ninth in Kism, in Kinsman. We're trying to do this on a monthly or every other month basis and get around to, uh, all parts of Trumbull County. Uh, but it is great information and I encourage everybody to attend one of our events.
Did you end up getting that, um, kind of formatted? I know you said you were working the kinks out of your program and then you were going to be able to have kind of a, you know, your PowerPoint presentation so that people can go and see it for those who aren't able to.
Yeah, that's, we are still in the works for that, Commissioner. So yes, we're, we're still in the works of getting that done. Thank you.
And is it on the website, the dates?
Dates, yeah. The dates are on, on my website. I believe they're also on the Clerk of Courts and, and the Probate Court's website. But the dates are on, on the County Reporter's website, uh, and we'll continue to update those as we set dates and times moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any business they'd like to address?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, I'd just like to remind the voters of Trumbull County that March nineteenth is quickly approaching. So get out and, uh, and vote. Let's vote French go out and for the better good of Trumbull County. And, uh, when you said that meeting was at Colberg, I might attend that. So I don't want her to accuse me of anything. I'll make that stated here. I might attend the meeting at Colberg, okay? Is that okay with you?
Thirty.
What time is it?
Saturday, twelve-thirty at the Municipal Building in Hubbard.
Okay, and for Dave Pap and Amos Austin, there is a such thing as a washer and dryer.
I'm sorry, it's eleven-thirty, eleven-thirty Saturday. Anybody else in the public? Phone lines, if you have anyone on the phone lines, hit star six to unmute yourselves and announce your presence. Star six on the phone lines.
I have something that I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
A, a problem. I've had a lot of, um, phone calls and social media messages and text messages. A lot of people, um, reaching out to me under the belief that I have created some fake social media profile talking about, uh, a problem that's been going on in Hubbard with a massage parlor. I, it is not my account, but the problem is being addressed. There are a lot of people who have, uh, who live in the neighborhood, um, who are talking about what's going on at the truck stop there. And I just want everyone to know that it is, uh, under investigation. I have, uh, the appropriate task force has been on that issue.
No idea what that is.
And I did talk to the Human Trafficking Task Force last week, the, the chief in charge of it, and he said they've had no issues with the place you're talking about. So everything you're saying, I believe, is slander. You're slandering a woman in her business. And I think that's, uh, in poor taste that you would do that for political gain.
If you look at the Secretary of State's website, there's a person whose name is on there that, and the address is called, is in Flushing, Flushing, New York.
It's corporation, correct. We saw that.
Is the epicenter of human trafficking. If you look at anyone.
According to who, Commissioner, Commissioner, you're going off in a way, way wrong way.
Let's, let's, uh.
We're not getting a lot of this. It's slanderous.
We're off the rails again. I don't.
The task force, and if you Google search it online, there's a web search program, a, a site, it's called.
I'm sure you know, you know about the sites. We're not, we're not going into this. We're not getting into this, Commissioner.
Have to do with anything?
Sorry, but.
Okay, we're not getting, Robert's Rules of Orders. We're not going to get into slanderous business in this.
An official who owns a facility.
You own the building. You, how many people have been arrested at your facility? You own seven houses. You want to see the arrest record of your tenants? Would you like that to come up public? Are you responsible for someone getting arrested for meth because they're tenning yours?
People are contacting me over that and I've, and, and I just want people to know that it's already.
We're not going to get into this thing. There's, you're, you're trying to slander a business owner. You're trying to slander a businesswoman who's been in good standing in the community for fourteen years, who has all of her state permits and Health Department permits and inspections from the state.
If you, there is not, you, in order to operate a.
If you, there is not, you, in order to operate, look, if you're operating a foot, foot spa reflexology and all you have are advertisements with young girls, that is a problem.
Those are not advertisements legitimately from the business there.
Yes, it is.
And a lot of this stuff could be you at home when your computer doing it, for all we know. It's not legitimate from the business.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident.
I'll put all the links.
You can put it online and I'm sure you wanna fight a social media war. That's absolutely fine. But you're, but it has nothing to do with the Commissioners, with us. It has nothing to do with attacking business owners.
Reach out to me because they're concerned because of a establishment where they have.
They're all of a sudden concerned because you're in an election with somebody. Where were they concerned for fourteen years?
It was a hair salon and then just recently the owner.
No, it was not.
Got it, yes. The owner of the establishment has been operating for a few years and they got them to register it with the Secretary of State.
Right, and they treat diabetic patients. They have a list of people. If you wanna, you wanna.
Right.
Condemn everyone that goes there for diabetic reasons and stuff? Okay.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I'd like to address this since she opened the door. I wasn't gonna. But people are contacting her because she's the one who started the social media. She put all this out there for the world to see. Oh, yes, you did. I seen the posts. We've all seen the posts. You're accusing a man who owns a building. He owns the building, not the business. You accused him of owning the business and running illegal stuff out of there. I seen your posts. You put them everywhere. So if a tenant in your rental is selling drugs, should we run around and say Nikki Frenchgo is a drug dealer? Should we do that? Would that be appropriate to?
You're under investigation too by a lot of people, we could say.
My God, you can't stop. You are a horrible person.
Yeah, that, that's. No further comment on that needed.
All the moms with.
Consider. Make a motion to adjourn.
Consider this. I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
It's under investigation with the appropriate task force.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.